Six P M. And I am Chair Lanay Turley Trejo. Hi, everyone. And our flag salute will be by Fernando Solis. Please.
Put your right hand on your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Fernando. And we'll go ahead and have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chair Turley Trejo.
Here.
All are present.
And we don't have any public comments on non-agendized items, correct? Okay, then I'll go ahead to the consent calendar. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted, there we are, by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to six P M. and submitted to planning commissioner at Temecula C A dot gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number two zero two one dash five four. And the first item under the consent calendar is, are the minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Second, okay. We have Commissioner Hegel made the motion and Commissioner Solis seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. And now we have business item number two. Consider appointments to planning commission subcommittees for calendar year two thousand twenty-five. Matt?
So this is our annual planning commission subcommittee assignments. These are all ad hoc committees. None of them are standing. With Adam Ruiz no longer with us, I think that's a good starting point is to look at all of the subcommittees that Adam, former commissioner, Adam Ruiz was on. And then there are a few of these where I think consistency is key. And I think, I'll mark those and we can come back to them, but you may want to start with just filling positions with Adam Ruiz and then going through the rest of the list.
Okay, sounds great. All right, so I'll start with a hospital subcommittee. So there's an opening there. I am on there and I'd like to stay on there, but there is an opening for someone to be on there with me.
I'd like to do it and I'll be willing to give up one of mine.
Okay. Does anybody else have any preferences on that? Are you good with Commissioner Hegel?
I'm good with him.
Good with that? All right. We'll vote on all that at the end, right? We don't need to vote on every single, right?
Yeah, we'll do it at the end.
Okay. And then the next one, straight down, is human services subcommittee. What, can you tell me what that means? Because I have, Matt, sorry. Can you give me, like, I've been on that, but I have never met.
It's certainly an underutilized subcommittee. I think it has, the human services has to do with the community services, which are often covered by T C S D.
Community services, meaning?
The community, uh, Temecula community.
Are we talking about homeless outreach?
Yeah, it would be associated with homeless outreach.
Then I would stay on there. I just, we haven't done anything with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there something going to be done in the future?
There could be.
Okay.
Oftentimes, you know, T C S D handles a lot of that, but if it was something where they wanted more input from another commission, we could do that.
All right. Would anyone like to serve on there with me? And serve the human population? Anyone? Anyone?
I'll do it.
You said you'll hang out with me?
I'll hang out.
You know what? We haven't done a whole lot, so you'd probably be okay. All right. Okay, so we have Solis and Turley Trejo on human services subcommittee. And then the next one, municipal code maintenance subcommittee that has Hegel. Does anyone want to join that one? And what, maybe give us a little tidbit on that.
We do the annual maintenance, so Title seventeen, the planners answer a lot of questions. They answer a lot of questions over the phone, at the counter. And then we may, they may ask a question where we realize something isn't necessarily clear in the development code, or we need to clean something up, or there's a cross-reference. We do that annual maintenance. That's an example. And then there are additions, like the alcohol ordinance. So it's a, it's a pretty active committee.
Okay.
Ma- Madam Chair, may I ask, when are the committees typically meeting?
So typically, we try to meet before our planning commission meeting, if we can, to make it convenient, so to speak. Doesn't always work out that way. But that's when staff normally tries to plan those, is before planning commission meetings.
Okay, I'm interested in serving on this committee if nobody else has gims.
All right. So we, anybody else? Are we good? Nobody's speaking up? So we've got Hegel and Watson on the municipal code. I don't know why that's a hard word for me. Maintenance Subcommittee. Then we're going to move down to Temecula Village, because that's another one Ruiz was on, and Hegel's on that one. And maybe you can tell us.
Which one?
Temecula Village. P D O five. Planning Development. Is that what that means? Planning Development?
We have several Temecula villages in Temecula, so.
Which one is that?
This is P D O five. Yeah, this is.
Is that the one that has the apartments down here on Rancho Cal? Buckholder's Project? Does that sound right? Right next to the apartments that are like up on the hill, big white complex.
Thanks, Stuart. It's called rendezvous. It's across from the Portofino Apartments.
Okay.
I'd be interested in taking former Commissioner Ruiz's place on that.
Okay. Anyone else interested? Or shall we say yea, or Commissioner Watson?
We've never met, so.
Okay, awesome. All right, then we have, is that all Ruiz was on, really?
Short-term rentals.
Did I say that out loud? Okay.
Short-term rentals, which is the one above it.
Oh, short-term rentals. Okay. Short-term rentals ad hoc. And that was really prevalent at one point, so I don't know how prevalent that is right now. Is it always kind of in the works?
Yeah, I mean, it was really prevalent. We developed the ordinance.
Really important.
I think we still need it, though.
Yeah, okay. You want to do that?
It's not really active right now, but it could be.
Okay. So Solis is interested in that, and I'm going to stay on there. Did I miss Ruiz anywhere else? No? Okay. So we're going to start at the top and just review them and see if anybody's wanting to move around.
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, just a, before you get into these.
Yeah.
There's a few that I would recommend stay consistent, just given.
Okay, yeah.
How long the timelines have been and maybe where they're at. Some of them are near the end. So I would recommend consistency. And of course, this is up to the planning commission. It's just a recommendation that the Altair Project Subcommittee.
Okay.
General Plan Update. Sarafina, that'll be coming soon. Somers Bend is near the end. And then Uptown, Temecula.
Okay. All right, so we, we won't discuss those. So we'll go next to Butterfield, Temecula Parkway. So that's also one that we've been on and we've never met. Can you kind of, I mean, just so that we have a little review.
So Butterfield and Temecula Parkway Subcommittee, that essentially is the Corona property and surrounding properties.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, there's a drainage issue.
Right, okay. Got it. You good staying on there?
And we do have an application.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, we totally want to stay on it then. Okay, next one is Commercial Center. So that's, Solis and I, and that is, I think we really met with that one either.
It's general to the different commercial centers. So the Power Center is the Target Center.
Okay.
Tower Plaza.
Okay, okay. Did you used to be on that one? And you got off of it? Because you were on with it, with Target. Okay. All right, General Plan, we're keeping there. Hospital, we already talked about that one. Human Services. Okay, the next one is Infield Subcommittee. And I would like to stand there. Bob, are you wanting? Okay. Linfield Project Subcommittee, so that, and is that still relevant? Yes?
It is.
Okay. All right, and that's Hegel and Solis. Are you guys both good there?
I'm good.
Hegel?
Yeah, fine.
Are you good? Okay. And then the next one, we've got Hegel and Watson, which is Municipal Code Maintenance. And then Uptown Subcommittee, Turley Trejo and Watts, Promenade Mall Project Subcommittee, Hegel and Solis.
Yeah, Promenade Mall, I'd like to give up, so.
You want to give up? Okay. Anybody want Promenade Mall? That's not on there.
I'd like that.
Did you tell him that he would like that? Okay, perfect.
I'm impressionable.
He's only in one.
That's good. Okay.
I'm sorry, too. This is the third one.
All right, and then Sarafina, we're keeping as is Hegel and Solis. Where is Sarafina? Remind me.
Sarafina is north of Nicholas Road.
Oh.
And Ron, what's that intersection?
That's Joseph Road.
It's Joseph, yeah.
Okay.
So Joseph is where the multi-use trail is terminating that Woodside Homes is putting in right now, but there will be that development, the Sarafina development coming. So there will be some action.
There will be some action.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, short-term rentals, we just talked about. Solis and Turley Trejo, you good? You're good staying on there. Fernando?
I'm good, yes.
Okay. Somers Bend, we're going to keep the same with Hegel and Solis. Temecula Village, we talked about. Hegel and Watson. Town Square Marketplace Subcommittee. Yeah, so that's right there in Town Square.
Those are the paved parking lots. Not a lot of activity for the near future.
Okay.
But we'll keep those.
We'll keep it for now. Okay, good. So that's myself and Watts. And also TruX Hotel Subcommittee, anything, any action there? Is that kind of?
No, but you never know.
You never know. All right, and that's myself and Watts. Also, Uptown, Temecula, myself and Watts. Winchester Hills, that's Hegel and I. So are there any that you were looking at that you were interested in? Or are you good with what you've got? Okay. Is everybody good?
Good.
Is anyone going to protest? Or are we okay?
Not today.
Not today? We're gonna, we're gonna be okay? All right, so we probably need to have a motion on this, do we? Or is it just?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Mighty Sal, we need a motion on this.
Yeah, I would just go ahead and to confirm.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion by Fernando and a second by Mr. Watson to approve the subcommittee members as appointed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Awesome. You guys are so easy to work with. It's just so great. Okay. Now we're going to move on to the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For a public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary, or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with a decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within fifteen calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed in the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number two zero two one dash five four. I feel like I should have that memorized by now, but I'm not sure I do. Okay. Item number three, planning application number P A two four dash zero three nine one. A conditional use permit, application for Quiero Brunch, a future restaurant requesting a type forty-seven on-sale general eating place at two seven four two three Inez Road, Suite one oh three. Hi, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you stated, this is a conditional use permit application for Quiero Brunch, which is a future restaurant requesting the type forty-seven A B C license at the building located at two seven four two three Inez Road, specifically Suite one zero three. So the image on the top left depicts the immediate vicinity of the approximately five thousand square foot building at said address. And we have three suites within this building. Suite one zero one has the Oboba Tea coming in at around eight hundred square feet. It has Suite one zero two, which is the Press Espresso at eighteen hundred square feet. And Suite one oh three, which is Quiero Brunch, is approximately twenty-three hundred square feet. And the project site is located in the Tower Plaza Commercial Center, which is approximately thirteen hundred feet north of the Rancho California and Inez Road intersection. So here we see the floor plan of the five thousand square foot building with only Quiero Brunch shown in detail. The red arrow at the top right image shows the restaurant space and outdoor patio with a perspective view taken from Inez Road. And then you have the image at the bottom right, which is a perspective taken from the parking lot, which is interior to the site. And again, here's Suite one zero three, highlighted in red. And then more specifically, within the Suite one zero three, shown, highlighted in red, here is the eight hundred forty-five square feet of indoor dining. We have the seven hundred twenty-five square feet of outdoor dining. And then the rest of the space is divvied up between the lobby, kitchen, service areas, hallways, restrooms, which makes up about fourteen hundred square feet. Now moving on to the analysis, the type forty-seven itself will allow for the spirit-based drinks on the menu to accompany the meals. The type forty-seven is the license type that essentially authorizes a sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for the consumption on the licensed premises. And this is for a full-service restaurant that specializes in Mexican cuisine with a specific focus on breakfast and lunch options. And the proposed operational hours are from eight A M. through nine P M. seven days a week. A B C is the agency that will be processing the P C R N, Public Convenience or Necessity, which is typical of them, because they're the ones that process this for restaurants. Conditions have been added to this conditional use permit, which include the following. A full menu available at all hours that alcohol is served. Also, that the termination of alcohol sales shall be no less than one-half hour prior to closing. And the applicant has stated that no live entertainment is proposed. Staff has advised the applicant that an entertainment license or a temporary use permit is the appropriate path forward for any future entertainment. So staff, we do have a change to a condition of approval. This is more of like a cleanup item or clarification item, which is a change to C O A number three, where we're changing the language from three years to two years on the expiration. So C O A number three would read as follows. Expiration, this approval shall be used within two years of the approval date. Otherwise, it shall become null and void. Use means the beginning of substantial construction contemplated by this approval within the two-year period, which is thereafter diligently pursued to completion, or the beginning of substantial utilization contemplated by this approval, or use of a property in conformance with a conditional use permit. A modification application made to the approved development plan does not affect the original approval date of a development plan. So this change is essentially to meet the intent of ensuring that the applicant has two years to quote-unquote "activate" the conditional use permit. So the Temecula Municipal Code differentiates a two-year activation window for a conditional use permit and conditional use permit expiration if the C U P ceases to operate for three years. And that's per Temecula Municipal Code seventeen point zero four point zero one zero G. From a sequo standpoint, the project is categorically exempt per one five zero six one B three, as there is no possibility that the proposed project would have a significant impact on the already-built environment. And also per Section one five three zero one, Class one, as this is an existing facility. With that, staff recommends the planning commission approve P A twenty-four dash zero three nine one with the revision to C O A number three and subject to the final conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm here to answer any questions, as is the applicant, Herman Herrera.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start on my right here with Bob. Do you have any questions for staff?
I do not have any questions for staff.
I do not either.
Okay. Fernando?
Yeah, I just have a question. So there's two businesses right next to each other, right? The other business is not combining it together? The other business is, the boba's still going to stay there?
We don't know if it's going to stay there, but it is there currently.
Oh, okay, okay. That's it.
Mark, questions?
Just one or two. I'm wondering, Jaime, can you help me understand? I saw in the staff report and then it looks like in the applicant's statement of operations that they intend to be operating between eight A M. and nine P M. But it seemed like in the C O A it was approving till midnight time for dispensing. Can you help me understand that, what looks like a difference?
Correct. So you are referring to a condition of approval that references the cease of serving alcohol at eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine, which is a parameter that staff set in the conditions of approval, so that in the event that the applicant seeks a special event permit, like a temporary use permit, or an entertainment license, that we have that as the absolute latest, that they would be serving alcohol, which is consistent with the citywide operations for restaurants serving alcohol.
Also, I wanted to ask if, thank you, by the way, for that answer. So which is the, which is the preeminent document, or which is the guiding principle? Who wins? Nine P M. or midnight for special?
Day-to-day operation is going to be nine P M. In the event that he applies for any extra events, like let's say Cinco de Mayo, or any other excuse to go operate later than nine P M., as stated in his application and as stated in his condition of, or statement of operation and the application for the conditional use permit itself, that is the hour that, windows that are approved for the day-to-day operation.
Okay, and do we know how many of this type of license, type forty-seven, are allowed in this census tract?
The exact number, we do not have at hand, but we do know that the, there is already saturation here with regards to the concentration of alcohol licenses. This is something that was analyzed at staff level. Simply, one of the reasons that, or two reasons why we have over-concentration has to do with the census tract itself. It is, geographically speaking, a larger census tract, so it does encapsulate a lot more concentration of restaurants because of the amount of commercial centers that we have here. And then the other reason why we anticipated there being a concentration of alcohol is because part of that census tract has the mall. And so with the mall, we have a lot of the restaurants that have the type forty-seven licenses as well. So we have approximately, or last time I checked, as of two days ago, thirty type forty-seven licenses in this census tract.
Very good. Thanks for the answers.
Thank you.
I could just add to that real quick. So Jaime, you cover that well as far as the census tracts and the idea that we don't seek to put alcohol uses in the middle of, let's say, Paseo del Sol, but in our commercial centers. So that's where we see the over-concentration. So when we talk about how many A B C licensed type forty-sevens are permitted in a given census tract, I'd just like to speak to that a little bit to say, it's not so much what's permitted, it's what's allowed before it's considered over-concentrated. And then when A B C, because it's a restaurant, is going to look at the public convenience or necessity factor. And so that kind of brings into play the idea that you want these things in your commercial centers, not in the middle of your residential areas. And that kind of starts to play into the, the public convenience side of it. So not so much an allowed thing, but when it's looked at as over-concentration and needs maybe a little bit further look to see, is this the right location for it, not, is it allowed? So just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions of staff? You have another one? Okay.
Yeah, I know that corner's a little difficult to see, kind of when you're driving through. Are they, do you already have a proposed plan for signage?
We, I do believe that a signage permit has been applied for in conversations with the applicant, and if needed, you can, I can defer to them, but I know that there was additional signage that was approved on there, partially in part to ensure that as they're doing some renovations in there that you can't actually see into the building. That's just based on the conversations that we have had. But of course, any signage would be reviewed against the Temecula Municipal Code and/or the sign program that may be associated with the property, and any necessary permits would be obtained.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone good? Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Jaime. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing and bring our applicant up. Welcome. Good?
Sorry for how I look. Just got done after a long day.
That's okay. I was wondering where your shirt and tie was, but that's okay.
All right, this is new for me right here, so.
Yeah.
Mind me, I'm not the best in public, but I do my best.
Maybe just share with us, you know, just share with us why you're bringing this application and, and why you feel like we should approve this application.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity, for just even allowing us to be here and be, at least given opportunity to be part of the city. Quiero Brunch is a new concept that me and my wife created, bringing in a traditional Mexican brunch to the city. So that's kind of the type of concept that we would be creating here. You know, being already, there's toast, House Haven, big places that we're big fans of, that we frequent often. So we just felt like bringing in a brunch that could contribute and bringing in different options and flavors and different type of menu items that would help the tourism, that would just contribute to the overall experience for Temecula. I think that's something that, when we did this intentional, you know, to come to the city, we did it with a purpose behind it. We've always wanted to be. We've always wanted to be in Temecula, such a great city. We do have existing restaurants called Michi Tacos that we have in the city of Menifee, uh, as well as in Lake Elsinore. So our background on bringing in, you know, the restaurant experience that we've created, you know, Michi's have been created about three years ago, four years ago. You know, we house about seventy local, um, employees there, so we, we, a lot of residents. So we created about sixty jobs. Um, so we're, you know, we're excited to bring that here and to bring a full-on experience to, to Temecula, so.
And you said in your statement of operations eighty jobs. How?
What was that?
You said in your statement of operations that you would provide eighty jobs?
Yeah, so right now, we're actually conducting a job fair this Saturday. So far, we've had about sixty applicants. Right now, uh, we've already hired an HR department with our company. But we do plan on creating career paths, just like we do right now with Michi Tacos. That's a company where we wanted to change the perception of taco shops, right? We wanted people to feel like there was opportunity. So our employees, our, our retention rate is really actually pretty high. Um, we do offer, for example, benefits. We match six percent 401K. We offer Kaiser plans, dental, we do life insurances. So it's something that you don't see common in the restaurant industry. Um, so that was our purpose in our mission statement in terms of providing more jobs, more quality jobs, and also providing the community, you know, a place where families can frequent and enjoy, you know, traditional, authentic food. So, so far, that has been a successful concept that we have created. And that's why we feel like Temecula would be, you know, a city that we know that we can bring in, um, a good operation, um, that has a solid background to continue that, uh, mission statement that we have.
Do you have, um, type forty-seven license in your taco shops?
We have type forty-one, um, at the existing locations. So we have two forty-ones. Um, we have been in multiple lottery draws that unfortunately we, we just didn't get. But it's, it's something that, um, this would be our first forty-seven.
Okay, I have other questions, but I'm gonna defer to my colleagues first. We're gonna start with Fernando first this time.
Uh, no, no questions.
No questions? Okay, Mark?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Couple of questions. At, at Michi Tacos, uh, your, your license, you said you carry a forty-one. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. Have you ever had any, uh, been cited for any license violations?
Uh, not at all.
Not at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a pretty strict process with like the trainings, um, that we have for employees. And number two, um, even with customers in terms of the amount of consumption and things like that. Uh, we also have like a security, uh, you know, there's a, in the shopping center, there's, you know, a security patrol that, you know, are in there to just overall ensure that the customers feel like this is a family-oriented, um, operation and just keeping it that way. So employees know how much not to serve, right? Um, when someone does, you know, maybe look intoxicated or, you know, how we put an immediate stop. And typically at, at Michi Tacos, you know, they're there for an average no more than about thirty, forty minutes, uh, you know. So it's not really a place where you'll see like a lot of TVs and hanging out, sports bar style. It's more of a, you order, you sit down, and then, um, you just have a quick meal and then go on with your day.
Sure. In the outdoor patio area of, of the, of the new place that you're considering, does, uh, will you have any amplified music out there?
What, what was that again?
Will you have any amplified music or speakers on the patio?
Not at all.
Not at all.
Yeah, we found that music loud, like su- super loud music. It just really doesn't go hand in hand. Michi Tacos in Menifee, just the audio system inside, which is not too loud. The experience at times gets affected, right? A lot of the customer feedback, we're really big on Yelp. I think we're a four-and-a-half rating star restaurant. So we care a lot about what our customers feel and what they, you know, their concerns. Um, so even then, at that location, we have now auto-tuned things where the volume, you know, is controlled, not by employees, but now just, it's an auto-controlled tone. So we plan to bring that to Temecula, so it's not in, you know, something, you can have a conversation, that's what we want, is people to be able to, be there and enjoy a meal. So no, no loud, loud music like that.
Does the ABC require you to sell a certain percentage of your grocery receipts in food and alcohol, or how do they, do they require that from you?
Uh, yeah, but you know, fifty, at our existing spots, about seventy percent of our places, we, we rely a lot on food. That's what Michi Tacos has built a brand behind, and we plan on doing that, the same thing here. So actually, our food volume outweighs the amount of the alcohol. So, so we don't rely on alcohol in that sense to, to drive business. We do it to really enhance the experience for those that do wanna go and have taco and beer. It, it goes hand in hand for those.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Bob?
Thank you. Welcome. What hours do you plan to serve alcohol or what meals do you plan to serve alcohol?
Um, so the meals would, so the meals, um, our menu's gonna look like, we'll have a chilaquile option of like six flavors of chilaquile. We would be having in front would be a bakery slash kind of coffee shop. So we'll be bringing in a lot of the latte work, um, you know, the horchata latte, something that's different. I mean, the press is right behind us, they're good friends of ours. Um, we're not even there to compete in the sense of, we wanna bring something unique and different that, you know, residents can come out, tourists can have and try something different. So the plates, at the end of the day, uh, will be full entrees. We will have like hostess waiters, a full experience, um, a variety of chilaquile options. You'll have like the souffle pancakes, you're gonna have the traditional American breakfast. And with that, we would complement, you know, a small menu item of like the traditional culture drinks from, from Mexico. Um, so it would be like a unique spot where, you know, you can't find that drink in every restaurant you go to. It would be more, hey, let's go to Geto Brunch, and we can actually have a carajo, we can have, um, a, you know, special al pastor smoked margarita. Um, so the items, the cocktails, you know, be ten or less probably cocktails that we would try to complement with those, with those entrees.
Okay. Last question is regarding security. Given the location, you're kind of tucked in, there is a empty lot next to you, and I was, I went over today to check 'cause I was concerned about people possibly coming over the, you know, coming off the empty lot into your restaurant after you close and stealing alcohol. But there is a, it's well-guarded, I gather, that's city property there?
That, um, I think it's actually privately owned.
Is it privately?
It is, it's privately owned.
Okay, 'cause it's got a, it's got a big fence with razor. No one's coming over that fence.
I know, it's, uh, it's one of those things that, we actually looked at the spot two years ago and were like, ah, is this something that we would want? What solutions can we implement?
Yeah.
Um, how can we make it look cosmetically nice so even, you don't even see those, um, barbed wires? We're actually working with the landlord right now to hide that. 'Cause since we've actually taken over, I was actually talking today to Swag that was there in the local sheriff's department, they've been really good with, um, helping and assists. I've seen their day-to-day operations, and it's actually gotten a lot better. The first week I started construction, my tools they get, you know, place they get breaking into, and they took my tools, right? But since that, um, we've, our cameras that we've installed, more lighting there. Uh, we do plan on bringing in Nine Shield. Nine Shield is a private security company that we use. I think they're part of Storm Baseball. And they're also at our Lake Elsinore area as well as our Menifee. So we contract them privately just to enhance the security overall. This is a, for example, I had, I got a, a proposal about nine hundred dollars a month. So they would be coming in at the late hours on top of the security, I believe that's already there. They would do the roundabouts, but it would be something where me and the three tenants will probably split that cost. But just to create a better, you know, just a nicer environment. So when families do go there, you know, they, they're not having to see all that stuff, right? And at night, no businesses are having to be broken into.
Okay. And you're, and you plan on having cameras then, too?
Camera, yeah, cameras have been installed, yeah. Multiple cameras, um, on top of the ones that are already there. Then again, the, the night security would be primarily focused in that corner. So just to ensure, my, I, I would hope to propose a brick, like a, a brick wall there, you know, and to do a whole wall, so that way you eliminate any type of, 'cause what they're doing is they're, they're, they're cutting the, the fence, right? And they're sneaking in. But I think with us being there, it's gonna fill in that void. And because of the amount of activity, right, that we hope to bring, um, it just kind of steers them away and hopefully gets rid of them permanently.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Gary?
Yeah, I just wanna welcome you and, uh, and thank you for coming and bringing a new look, a new type of dining experience for the people here.
Thank you.
I applaud you for your initiative and, and your drive. And you're doing just fine as a public speaker, so don't let any.
Oh, no, no.
You've got a great voice, you should be in radio almost.
No, right, no, no, I, I appreciate it. I, I, I used to do presentations. I worked for Wells fifteen years, and I was actually a district leader with like Beast and Massacre. So I helped businesses, but I don't know why, but when I get in front of a public, I get red. And I get like a tomato red. And then people would just tell me like, hey, man, this guy's getting red, look at him. And so I just kind of, if I can avoid it, I'll avoid it.
You're doing great anyhow. We, uh, welcome and, and, uh.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your, all your answers to the, to my colleagues' questions.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions. So it's, I mean, the name says brunch, right?
Yeah.
But you're open till nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Right? So you're obviously serving dinner, too.
Ye- um, well, that's the thing is that we've, um, so my wife's a big brunch fanatic, right? So we're a big brunch fanatic. So we, it's hard to experience brunch or a breakfast item late in the evening, right? So, um, the hours are really to provide a, almost an all-day type of brunch. Like if I could say it would be a Denny's, uh, you know, I would love that, but ideally, we're not doing a twenty-four hour. But the idea is to be one of the first kind of concepts, and we've seen it, it, it's worked, um, where we, we create a later night experience. Uh, the menu does shrink down in a bit. Um, but obviously would then allow people for a late-night brunch experience. So that would be kind of the, the trial concept to see what would work and not work, right? So to be on the safe side, um, that's our target timeframe. Keep in mind, if that doesn't happen, um, reduction of hours, I think, things like that would obviously be considered right away.
Okay. So you talked about hiring Nine Shield, which is a private security. What was the nine hundred dollars, is that what you pay them?
Oh, yeah, that, that's just kind of like, I was just saying, how about, they sent already a proposal, but the idea is we would look at the cost, um, for them just to come for a certain hours at night. So it would be a, a budget and a cost that we would take on as a tenant.
Nine hundred dollars a month, is that what you said?
Uh, no, I think it's, it's, it's broken down to like probably weekly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then these are all retired, I think, sheriffs. Uh, Nine Shield employs a lot of, you know, I think there's some retired or some sheriffs from Temecula, but it's a pretty big, uh, organization. We went with them because they don't show up in just like small security cars. They're, they're actually real patrol cars and then they look like, they're armed and, um, they look like the real deal.
Armed and dangerous.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciated your statement of operations summary. You know, I'm always a little bit concerned with type forty-seven. And, uh, and with the CUP, it goes with the land, right? So even if we love you, if somebody else comes in, they also have that type forty-seven. So that's always a question for me. To make sure that that's a good area to have a type forty-seven. But I think that you've answered the questions well, and, um, that was the main thing. I was just, you know, concerned about people drinking in the morning. It's a brunch, you know, kind of thing, and, and encouraging that. But it sounds like they're more kind of specialty drinks with the meal. And it sounds like you're very mindful of not over-serving people.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks to my, my wife and, and, um, our whole team of operations. That's why, as we started growing, right, um, you run into a lot of, you see a lot of stories, right, more than anything. Um, I build a great relationship with Sadie from ABC, and she's been a big help, just kind of guiding us and helping us incorporate the right trainings and procedures. Um, even our new payroll portal, Paycom, who we use. The team members will actually have, so there's pre-training that's gonna be done before we even launch the restaurant. I mean, that's why we're doing a lot of the, uh, onboarding now. But the idea is they would go on, they'll have an app-based or cloud-based, so all the training, including the alcohol, you know, all the certifications, that they won't be able to, to actually even operate or work at the restaurant until a lot of that's fulfilled. Um, so those strict conditions, just because we, we've never looked at it as, we need the alcohol sales, right? Push more alcohol. It's more of, um, you know, the experience in terms of the food quality and what we're known for. Um, and I think the training that's necessary, I think a lot of businesses sometimes don't really pay too much attention. They're more reactive and instead of proactive. When the situation happens, then hey, let's fix it. We've always been really big on preventing things, even with workers' comp. You know, all the OSHA trainings, um, you'd be surprised if, if, if a building's at a warm temperature and your employees are feeling a certain way, that can create an audit, right? And, and a complaint. So we just try to make sure all of that stuff is aligned. We wanna keep going and growing and expanding, and, um, the best thing is always have all the right things in place, so that way, um, you know, it, nothing can, can hold you back or try to take you down.
When are you wanting, what is your plan, and when are you wanting to open?
So I, I'm dressed like this right now, 'cause, I mean, I look like this 'cause tomorrow, health department will be there. Michael's coming out to do the, um, initial, um, inspection. Water District, I think today just gave me the clearance, and so I would be going to, to, completing the whole process. We would be probably about maybe three weeks at most, four, from opening. All the new hires should be done by the end of next week, um, to start all the enrollment process and trainings.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anything else you wanna say?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm excited. I mean, I've always looked at Temecula, I, I admire a lot of the restaurants out here and the operations and just the, the wonderful city that it is. You know, I grew up in San Marcos, and I think before Temecula was even a real thing, right?
Right, right.
Just to see how much it's grown, um, and just to know that we're actually could, could be part of it. And we're willing to take on the challenge. And I know that location, right, you, businesses have come and gone there. Um, I did sign a ten-year lease, um, the fact that we're confident in our brand, our marketing, the te- the people we have on our team, um, and just the, the, the impact we'll make to the community. We're already part of, you know, Boys and Girls Club, we're part of, um, I believe it's, the ones that do the Christmas Humane Society. So my wife did a Christmas tree decoration at the mall this last, um, winter. And so, um, I think now having a restaurant here would be a big accomplishment for us and then, you know, a big win overall, so. Thank you, guys, for, for even allowing me and giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one more. Go, go ahead, go.
Just a, a quick comment.
Question?
No, go ahead, that's all right.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with, with the center. Right there by the trash enclosures, um, are you planning to maybe clean out, re-landscape that area or trim out the bushes? I know it's like, it's a hill. And that's where they hang out.
Yeah, so, um, so I own a landscaping contractor, I'm a contractor in landscaping. So, um, I already proposed a few things to the landlord. First of all, the enclosure with chicken wire, it has to go right away. Uh, so even that's gonna get touched up, painted.
Okay.
Um, new wood, uh, we're gonna put trims around, just like Starbucks did, just to kind of match, 'cause you have like a pretty location and then boom, turns it to something else.
Yeah.
So we do plan on enhancing, I think that's gonna be proposed. I don't know if there's adjustments to the plans, but it may just be replacing, um, nice, it make it look nicer.
Okay. Would it be okay for us to put something that you would have to re-landscape that area? Just that corner?
That corner?
Yeah.
I, I would probably have to maybe talk to the landlord about.
Oh, you talk to the landlord?
Yeah, 'cause that's kind of, um, you put it this way, he, he, he upgraded, 'cause that was one of my conditions when I came in. I said, I don't like the landscape. So it was just something where, uh, he put red, I think, red, uh, bark there. And, um, you know, and I, I even told him, hey, we have to get rid of all that, uh, that color red stuff. So, um, I think that would be a conversation I can have with, with him, um, in, in looking into that.
I agree.
If that's a.
I just, um, a condition of approval needs to be tied to the specific type of entitlement that, um, is being sought. Um, so that's one of the concerns. I think the larger concern is that I don't know that he has control over that area. That sounds like that's a landlord, so I don't think we can condition it.
Trying to talk about it, yeah.
Right, I don't think we could condition it because he wouldn't be able to effectively execute that. It would be the landlord that would have control.
Yeah, 'cause anything I've brought up to him, he's like, no, no, no. And he, he thinks money, 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 but I'm not, I'm not, I'm the guy that, hey, though, I'll take care of it. So I, I, I think you will see a change, I'll tell you that.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that's, that's also not what we're voting on, too.
I know those concerns about lighting, and, uh, I, I think once you're in there and you're occupying.
So when you mean about lighting, is it, uh, how are customers gonna see, uh, clients gonna see?
Well, I was just concerned about your signage, 'cause, you know, it's kind of tucked in over there.
Yeah. I think that, that tree did, uh, that was another condition. Um, I don't know who owned that, but we were gonna cut down that, trim that back. Um, there is some middles, um, in the works too, where, uh, we would be having, uh, a night light Um, there is some middles, um, in the works too, where, uh, we would be having, uh, a night light so you could see it. And a good size, you know, within the requirements to be able to give that visibility. Uh, we've, we've been a destination spot, so we're, 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 we're gonna push for that. Um, you know, in Lake Elsinore, being on Main Street, it's not the, you know, the most, you know, visited, I would say, city, right? Um, it, we, probably sixty percent of our business came from outside of Lake Elsinore. Um, in Menifee, I think another about forty, fifty percent came from the outside of City of Menifee. So we're hoping to create that type of, um, you know, um, marketing to, to really bring in people from other cities to Temecula.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That was my.
Any other questions?
Honorable Chair, if I may.
Yes, honorable chair. I like that.
There was a question that was raised by Commissioner, uh, Watson regarding the statement of operations and the conditions of approval and which one would prevail. And so I do think, um, in the interest of clarity, we could probably clean up the language just to make sure that there isn't any ambiguity. And so I wanted to run down the proposed language before the public hearing is closed. That way, the applicant has the opportunity to weigh in on what I'll be proposing.
Perfect.
So, uh, currently, uh, both the statement of operations, condition of approval ten and thirteen D one A, uh, provide that the applicant shall comply with their statement of operations dated October fourteen, twenty twenty-four on file the planning convi- division unless a conflict exists between the statement of operations and these conditions of approval, in which case the conditions of approval prevail. And so the concern is because the conditions of approval have longer operating hours for alcohol uses, there could be some argument made that they would be able to serve alcohol up until eleven fifty-nine PM, which is past the time for the stated hours of operation. So to clarify that issue, I'm proposing that the language be changed to provide the applicant shall comply with their statement of operations dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four period. If a conflict exists between the statement of operations and these conditions of approval, then the conditions of approval shall control, except that the applicant is limited to the service of alcohol during their hours of operation as, as specified in their statement of operations. And that way, it's clear that alcohol services only happening during the times that you're operating. So that's the intent and I, I, again, we, we haven't deliberated yet and said, uh, the, I'm sorry, the commission hasn't deliberated yet and said yes or no. But to the extent there will be an approval, um, is that something that would be agreeable to you to change the condition to limit?
Yeah, so for example, like if, let's say nine PM, it's ten, eleven, for example, right? And it, you know, kettle brunch gets, you know, consuming alcohol for, for whatever reason, we decide to stay open, something like that. Um, I know that won't happen at all. Um, the intentions will be, um, alcohol only served during operations. Um, we're not part of a nightlife entertainment group. We're, we have no experience in none of that, nor do we have any curiosity of being part of that. Um, I think our, our idea here is to just open up a brunch concept so that we can take to different cities. And just bring, I'm a big fan of toast, so I'll tell you this, I love toast. And I look at toast, you go in there, the ambiance, the, the vibes. I, I always tell people this, just think about toast, but bring in now Mexican culture food, um, as the brunch. So.
So is that, are you saying that you would be okay with changing the language to clarify that alcohol service is limited to only the hours specified during you, that, that you're open to operate?
Yeah, so that would be the nine AM, the eight AM to nine.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah.
And then that is also a half an hour.
Would that be also like, um, if we did have a temporary, does that?
A temporary use permit, I think, would have different, you could potentially have a temporary use permit that has different, um.
Hours.
Hours, because it's a temporary use limited to a certain specific event.
That would apply to the eleven fifty.
Nine PM.
Okay, cool. Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, yep.
But then also the requirement to stop serving alcohol half an hour before they close, correct?
Right, so all of the other language about.
Basically. Eight thirty is when alcohol would stop being served right now with their operation hours to nine PM, correct?
I need to look at the statement of operations with respect to that.
While she's checking, I do believe that's the case. We have a requirement for last call a half hour before close.
Correct. So even with a temporary use permit, that would be eleven thirty before the eleven fifty-nine.
That, that's consistent with our, with the code requirement, correct?
Okay, okay. So just so that's clear for you, right, while we're talking about it in the, in the public hearing.
Yeah, that, that makes, that makes sense.
Okay. Are we good? Maricela, you're still reading?
I, I'm still reading, but I, I think what we, we have what we need from the applicant in terms of concurrence. And I will keep reading to just verify that that language is here.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, do we have any, uh, public comments?
So you're opening the, uh, public. We have received none.
We have received none. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
And I will close the public hearing with no public comments. And we will deliberate before we make an, a motion. So who would like to start? Okay, Bob?
First of all, um, I just wanna say that I have a lot of friends that eat brunch all day long. So I don't think that's gonna be an issue. Second thing I just wanted to say is, uh, just to let the applicant know that we take responsibilities of serving alcohol very seriously here. And I think you got that from our questioning. But I, I think that as far as the location is concerned, this is a good location. I don't have any, I don't have any negative thoughts about it being part of a CUP there. So, um, I think this, the space is big enough to, to host other restaurants, should they move out at some point. Um, I think we've had restaurants there before, so I'm, I'm good with it, so.
Gary?
Yeah, I don't have too much to say. I like the idea. As I said, when we have new things come to Temecula, I think it's good for our, our people and for others that come to Temecula to enjoy it. So, uh, I don't have any problems with the operation, uh, of the individual. And, uh, it is a tough location though, you, you're, you're aware of that, you're walking right into that. But Starbucks is right next there, I think, and they have been told what's, what it's like too. So maybe the two of you can help, uh, solve that issue a little better than it, than it has been in the past. But anyhow, I, I applaud that, uh, new business if, if comes. And I don't have any, any problems with the, any of the statements my colleagues have made today, so.
Fernando?
I'm very familiar with this, this center. I had my office there, I think like two years ago. But it, it is a kind of a hidden location, so I think, uh, I think with social media now and everyone just does Google and find, finds a location. But, um, I, I mean, it's a great concept, so I think it'll be a great, great business here. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, just a, just a thought. I think, Maricela, I think you, you read my mind that, uh, you know, I wanted to perhaps see a little clarification there on, on the disparity between the, uh, the SOA, S, Statement of Operations, um, and the COA. So I'm, I'm glad the applicant seems amenable to that, uh, to that clarification, pardon me. Yeah, I, I gotta, I'll, I'll just say, I, I've been on the, I've been on this side in, uh, of the dais in Temecula and Escondido. I'm new here. Uh, but I've also been at the dais presenting, uh, eleven times for my own projects and, uh, in other cities. And I gotta say, if the, if, if the restaurant business doesn't work out for you, you might wanna consider being a professional planning commission presenter. You did an excellent job. Yeah, you, you were very forthright, very convincing. I think you were completely honest. You've got a great record. And, uh, I, I was, uh, I was happy to listen to you. Thank you.
Okay, so, yes.
So I have an answer to the question, which may require us to reopen the public hearing to bring the applicant back up. So, um, the code, and I'm looking here at, uh, section seventeen point zero nine, point zero six zero. Uh, the alcoholic beverage sales operational standards. Um, that's section B seven says, um, has the standards that we're talking about, about the half hour before closing, you need to stop serving alcohol. However, it says, uh, ABC licensed businesses open past ten PM shall adhere to the following. And then it has regulations regarding an hour before closing and then thirty minutes before closing, new alcohol service shall cease. Um, last call shall be made early enough to ensure service ceases prior to closing. So the concern here is that because the statement of operations is until nine PM, then the, this business would not need to, uh, would not be bound by a, alcohol service has to stop thirty minutes before closing. Uh, they'd be able to serve up until nine PM under this regulation. So if the planning commission is concerned about having service stopped thirty minutes before closing, then we would need to add a condition of approval that specifies that alcohol service must cease thirty minutes before closing.
Okay.
Is it already in there and I just missed it? 'Cause maybe it's there. Oh. It says meals shall be available up to a minimum of thirty minutes before closing. ABC licensed businesses shall operate as a modified eating place. I don't know that that addresses the service has to be stopped. I don't think it addresses. So, so I think just to make sure there's.
Yeah.
Utmost clarity, uh, what, what the concern was that was raised by the planning commission is ensuring that alcohol service ends thirty minutes before closing. So if you're closing at nine PM, alcohol service would end at eight thirty PM. So.
Do I need to open the public hearing since?
If we want, we, if we wanna hear from him, yes, we would need to open.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing.
So if that's the concern. Welcome back. Um, is, we would want to add an additional condition of approval that says alcohol sales must cease thirty minutes before closing. And so that is the proposed condition of approval that we would want you to weigh in on.
Yes.
That would be up for consideration by the planning commission.
I don't, I, I don't think there's gonna be a, a problem with that, 'cause, um, I, we, we're already gonna have procedures in place. I mean, pretty sure the teams, you know, wanna get out of there right at the time they have to get out. So that being said, I think, you know, by eight thirty, last call, hey, we're trying to get, you know, close up here. Um, that would be completely fine with us.
Okay. All right. So are we in agreement as a planning commission that we want that as a?
So we can close the public hearing now that we've gotten the input and then you guys can deliberate and decide on that.
The public hearing, thank you. All right.
I, I believe they, we should always have that.
Yeah.
And I think it, it definitely is more convenient for the business, 'cause you don't wanna be serving alcohol at, you know, five minutes before closing. And then you got somebody sitting there drinking a drink, you know, at nine thirty or whatever, and you guys are trying to get out of there. But I think just from a, a secure, you know, a safety point of view, I think you always wanna stop at half hour before.
You good with that, Gary?
Yeah, I, I am, and we need to be consistent all, all these, so everybody knows they're planned by the same rules. That's, that's my only thing. I'm, I'm all for it.
Fernando?
Yes.
Yes?
Sounds good.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, before we, no, before we make a motion or anything. I just had a, can I ask staff a question during this time? Maricela, can I ask staff a question during this time?
Yeah, if you need to clarify something further.
Yeah, can you just, um, Jaime, can you just pull up the changes that were made for the conditions of approval at the very end? Okay, so, um, the only thing I had a question on was. So a, a business has only two years instead of three years. That's the difference.
Yeah, so the conditions of approval that were originally written reference a three-year expiration, but that should have been two years. Because per that code section that's referenced, there, the municipal code differentiates, um, the activation window of a conditional use permit. So meaning today, if they get the entitlement, then they have two years to, let's say, do construction, um, open the business, get their inspection certificate of occupancy. That's a two-year window per the Temecula municipal code. But let's say that they're operational now and if they close the business or sell the business, but the conditional use permit is not exercised per se for three years, then it's almost like it expires on its own, like it lapses.
So that last paragraph, that's, that was my question. So it differentiates the two-year activation window for a CUP and CUP expiration ceases to operate for three years. So a little confusing, that last, for me, anyway. So let's say, let's say this business, you know, this passes tonight. They have this type forty-seven license and they have two years to activate it, right? They can work on their business, whatever. Hopefully, he's going, no, not two years, but they have two years. So, so where does that three-year come in? Like, ceases to operate for three years.
So the three years isn't actually in the condition of approval. The condition of approval would just.
I'm talking about last paragraph where it says a CUP ceases to operate for three years.
I, I can try and answer that one. Um, it's really not relevant to what we're talking about here tonight, but it is part of the conversation because it, it got put into that condition, so we need to clarify it. So what the three years is in reference to, um, is that if, say, he started this, this business and six months from now he closes it down. Well, that conditional use permit is still active and usable for three years after he closes it. If three years and a week goes by and no one has utilized that conditional use permit, then it becomes void.
Okay, so if another business were to op, were to buy that property, if it was three years and a year, three years and a week, they would have to come back to us, is what you're saying. Okay. All right, that, that clears it up. I just had a question on that. All right, anybody else have any questions? Okay, are we good? So I think we're good for a motion if someone would like to make, unless somebody else has any other discussion. Nope.
No.
Motion?
I'd like to make motion to approve project.
Okay, approve.
With the, with the addenda.
So is it approval with the changes to the conditions of approval, which was the condition of approval number three that we just discussed with respect to the two-year time period for the CUP activation as well as the change to condition of approval ten and thirteen D one A to include the language with respect to the conflict between the statement of operations and the conditions of approval such that the statement of operations prevail.
Yes.
And the addition that we just discussed about the, uh, alcohol sales seizing half an hour before closing.
Yes, both of those.
I think that's what he said.
All three of those.
All three of those.
We got it. Do we have a second? You said you had a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Fernando and second by Commissioner Hagel. You got it, Denise? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Nobody opposed, motion carries. Congratulations. And I do love toast, I have to say, so. All right, awesome. So let's go ahead to commissioner reports and I'll start on Fernando's end. Do you have a report?
Not this time. Maybe next, maybe next meeting.
Okay, Mark?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Gary?
I, I would be interested if my colleagues would be interested in, uh, in having some sort of pre-recorded, um. Would you be interested if we asked staff to put together some sort of pre-recorded message? So that former chairs, you know, reading the advisory to the beginning.
I was gonna ask that.
Is long, so if you would be interested in asking.
Yeah, we could also streamline that potentially, so we can, I can discuss with the chair to see how we can make that more efficient.
Yeah, that'd be great. I find myself zoning out when I read it, so I'm glad I read the right thing. Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I had it memorized. The, I just wanted to say to Public Works, I, I got to the ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts. And what I will say is, wow, it's, it's an incredible, um, complex. And I could see it becoming the home of the world pickleball championships. So, um, it was really done right, so.
Thank you.
All right, I am gonna comment on that, but I'm gonna, I would like to say something first. All right, I am gonna comment on that, but I'm gonna, I would like to say something first. We have like an entertainment license, right? I, and we've talked about this before when Luke was director, about bringing an alcohol license into that same kind of purview, so that it's not a CUP, so it doesn't go with the land. That is my, that's my concern every time we have a type forty-seven come in. And so I would really like to explore that more and see if we can get some more information on that, if that's possible, cause I think that would solve a lot of problems.
It is, that's something we can look into.
Okay. Are you guys good with that? People?
So that item is not on the agenda, so I think what we can do is provide direction to staff to look into and we can report back.
Okay, all right. And then, yay! Wow, I mean, we had like three hundred people there at the ribbon cutting. And Zach tried to say that there was more at the pump track, I don't know, when the pump track was open. Is it close? Could be. Yeah, okay, you might want to mention that to Zach. Anyway, I couldn't even get on the courts that day, you know, it was just not even possible. But it's been really fun, I've been there a couple of days since and it's been really fun to see so many people excited about it and just people that have felt like there wasn't enough room to play are now playing and you just see families coming, you see like moms and their kids and there's enough courts, you know, they can do that. So thank you so much to your whole, all your people. I know it was really amazing to, to make that happen and it's just like kind of a miracle for me watching it from the very beginning, when I was told no way, no how are we gonna do that in this city? And here we are, so persistence, it works. Anyway, they wanted, they wanted me off their backs, right? So thank you. Okay, do we have any commission subcommittee reports? Nope, nope, okay. And Matt, you're up.
Just one update, we presented in the past the idea of installing parking sensors in Old Town for on-street parking, the surface parking and the structure. And we've since installed a first phase along Old Town Front Street from the Northern Arch to Main Street on-street. So we have ninety sensors in and we have the software and we're gonna be monitoring utilization, the timing and all of that data. And we're gonna be presenting that to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee as a standing agenda item every month. So just wanted to let you know that. And then that's phase one and then phase two will be the remainder of all the public parking spaces in Old Town. So we'll have real-time data and we can begin to analyze policy and things like timing, instituting time parking and those types of things. But that would be done by the city council.
Wait, can you remind me again when the Old Town Local Review Committee meets?
It's the third Thursday of every month at ten AM, in here.
In here, okay, third Thursday. Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? Nope, seeing none. Ron, you're up.
So I was gonna mention pickleball, but you guys beat me to it, so it was a very well-attended event and we were very happy with how the unveiling went. So appreciate everybody's attendance that showed up, so thank you very much. And then the only other thing was, I was gonna mention French Valley. If you saw, the new detour went in, which is the northbound on-ramp at Winchester. So that is now the closed ramp, whereas the slip ramp is open. And so we're back to that configuration. We'll monitor, make adjustments when we need to, but if it goes as well as the first detour went, then we'll be through basically all of our detours and then finish up the project, so.
And isn't there like a fifty-five hour closing at some point or when?
No, that, that is a full-time closing for the northbound on, that's twenty-four seven.
And that will be when? We don't know yet.
No, we started it last night.
Oh, I was talking about, I thought there was a fifty-five hour closing of all of it at one point when they had...
That, that'll be in a month.
Okay, okay.
When the last section of the CDU, of the collector distributor gets put in. Yes, that'll be at the very end and I'll give you guys a heads up on that one.
Okay, sounds great. Any questions for Ron? Nope. All right, I think that's it, if anybody doesn't have anything else. And we will not meet on March fifth, correct? So our next meeting will be March nineteenth. All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.